Mr. Wright, we are so thankful that you came to join us on the Think Brazos podcast and actually our very first audio and video in-person interview with a candidate for the College Station City Council. So William Wright, thank you so much for joining us today.
It's a pleasure.
So you're running for place four of the College Station City Council. That's what, one of two races that are up for decision this November?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and the other one is, I believe, place six, right?
I believe so. I've been very focused on my own campaign, but I believe it is place six.
And you've been in it since right when people were first able to announce that they were signing up, right? To run, right?
Yes.
July, I guess?
Uh, yes, I believe the first day of filing was sometime in July or June, but I was getting myself prepared for the idea of running and then went full in. It's been, I've had people ask me, it's like, why are you running now? It felt like I came out of nowhere, but the truth is that I've been trying to lay the groundwork for years now, doing different things with the city, with different committees that I'm on, so.
Yeah, so your background, this isn't your first, I guess, not campaign, but this isn't your first attempt at a public service position with the city of College Station. You've been on committees, right?
Sure, yes, so I'm currently on the Historic Preservation Committee, which the big goal of that committee is to promote the history of College Station. Any historical, anything historical really, but the main focus, the main push we do is historical home markers, which certain homes are available for after they've been built for 50 years, maybe that they have historic reasons behind them. And then another committee I'm on is Planning and Zoning, which is a big one for the city of College Station where, you know, we look at planning and zoning.
Right.
Yeah.
So, yeah, with the planning and zoning, it kind of seems that there's a pattern here where very often someone who ends up running for city council before that time, they're on the planning and zoning. Is it kind of a stepping stone committee of sorts?
I think so. That's definitely, I was very excited to be appointed to it because I knew it was like, it was a big deal. And I was, I'm very happy to serve. I feel a sense of civic duty. And that was a real big moment for me. I think that it's, it's very attractive to serve on planning and zoning and then city council because you get into planning and zoning and you understand the process. You learn the process, you see how it works, you see how city staff interacts with the committee and how they're presenting the information to you. And then your job is just kind of to make sure that, you know, it goes in line with where you want the city headed.
Yeah.
Uh, planning and zoning, city council, the politics can definitely play a little bit more. But I'm on planning and zoning, I try to, I try my best to keep it like, is this within the structure of planning and zoning? I think that serves the committee the best.
Okay, very cool. And you've been on that since January or?
Since January, yeah.
Okay, and so the, the current city council, they take a vote to appoint people to that, or how does that work?
Yes, I believe in closed session, they look over the applications and then they appoint those votes.
Okay, well, back to the election, which is coming up on November 2nd, I believe. I'm sure you're aware of this already, but one of the interesting things about your candidacy, as well as several people running for College Station City Council this go around, is the significant age difference between those on the city council currently. And, and you're thirty?
I'll be thirty-three before the elections.
So you're thirty-two going on thirty-three. So with the exception of, I believe, the incumbent for place four, I mean, we're talking, most of these folks are retirement age, at least, you know, old enough to be your parent or even, I guess, in some cases grandparents. I don't want to be mean here, but there's a significant age difference that's been pointed out quite a bit. But at the same time, these folks, I mean, have you ever, I'm sure you've seen some of these city council meetings, they can go from four till like ten or eleven. I don't know what's in their coffee, but it must be really good coffee because they, I mean, they go forever. Do you think you can hang with these retirement age, but incredibly spry folks here? You think you can do that?
I think I can absolutely. It's riveting and I think that's, that's it. I, I have this, this deep interest in my blood. It's kind of like one of those things where, you know, you watch a movie that you, that you're really into and it could be four hours, but it doesn't feel that way. That's city council to me. Like, I'm like, yeah, I can sit there and watch it. Just this last meeting, which would have been two Thursdays, or two weeks from this Thursday, it went till like 11:00 PM. And I watched all of it and it was just fascinating. I have, I have a deep interest in what the citizens think and a lot of that was what the citizens felt about some changes that were maybe coming in the neighborhood and they were excited to talk about it. That gets me pumped up. And if I'm elected, that's my job is to listen to them. So it's like, no, I, yeah.
So the interesting thing about it though is, I know Elizabeth Kuna, who you're running against actually, she has a normal job, as you do. You work for a local company here, probably nine to five. And so that was kind of my curiosity there is, is if you start getting some of these younger folks, you know, into the council, they've got a daytime job too. I'm not saying that all the incumbents don't. I'm just saying that quite a few of them are retired and they can devote all this energy.
It is true. It is true. And I think the pressures would be different. Like for different workshops and whatnot, you're gonna have to take off full days. I know like the city manager, Brian Woods, he's, he's taking council, I believe, on kind of like a field trip to kind of see some stuff in Houston. And, you know, those days will happen and I have the time set aside, the vacation days. And I'm ready to sacrifice my personal vacation days for the benefit of the city and the citizens. So it's like, going into that, I was well aware, like this is gonna be a time commitment and I have the resources behind me to allocate towards that.
Okay, so let's hear a little bit more about who William Wright is. A little bit about your background. I know we met last week and talked some about this, but I'd just like to hear a little bit more about who you are personally and really the motivations for running.
Sure, so I'm William Wright. I'm running for College Station, place four. Lived in College Station my entire life. I wasn't born here, but I came here very young. And I came up through the school system, went to South Noel and Oakwood and A&amp;M Sully Middle School, then A&amp;M Sully High School and graduated from there and then stuck around and went to A&amp;M. I'm in Aggie, class of 2011. I met my wife there and we had a son, got married, had a son and decided to settle down here. And so I think College Station's sort of in my veins. I've always had a real deep connection with the city. I truly love the city. It's probably coming up through the city and going to various parks events, Christmas in the park, or doing things with my dad through the city, just all sorts of different little things. So at some point in my life, around 2011, when I started to really start to focus back on city politics and things like that, I had, I had a feeling that I wanted to give back. And so I truly think of this as a sense of civic duty. I feel like I'm giving back to a city that's given me so much. I think College Station is a very unique city. I like to describe it as like, not, you know, Reno is considered the biggest little city in the world, but I think College Station is very close to that in terms of what it offers and what you can do within the, the not very big scope and landmass that it actually is. I tell people, it's like, there's only so many cities that you can like, see a Broadway show and then be home in 10 minutes or see, you know, the Prime Minister of England speak and be home in 10 minutes. So I have, I have a lot of love for the city and I'm just ready to give that love back.
That's awesome. But, you know, after studying the city and living in it for some, you have to probably understand that, that it does have issues like any other city. And one of the big things, obviously, that Habitat for Humanity and builders think about a lot is housing. And the issues of housing in this community. And we wanted to hear your thoughts a little bit more. And one of them is, you and your wife, y'all own or you rent?
We rent.
You rent?
Yes, we actually, no, we say it's a duplex, a little duplex community. We love it. But the reality was that when we were starting out, we were two students with student loans and a young son and we couldn't afford College Station. And at that time, the houses we were looking at were $150,000. Those homes now are $220,000. Like they've appreciated since we were looking about a decade ago, which happens. But I know from my personal experience, like we still don't own a home. And just about everybody that I know, forgive me if I'm forgetting anyone that I went to high school with, graduated from here, they don't own homes in College Station either. And so it's very interesting now. I think there's a generational shift to where it's, it's more accepted to rent. It's more accepted to live in apartments. I think that's definitely part of it. But it's also, you know, an access. I don't think that for some of the salaries you can get in College Station and starting out, that those homes are immediately available for you.
Yeah, so it sounds like what you're saying is that there are two issues, is that one, price points are too high. But then the second thing is that the debt, you know, the student loans or just generally the salary that these starting families have. And, and we hear a lot of, even on the College Station City Council, talking about starter homes, starter homes. But, you know, you and I both know that a lot of times the starter home price points are still way above what you would typically see. To us, you know, the way we look at it, this is, this is a big problem because you've got a quote, "more affordable" city right to your north where unfortunately, a lot of these folks have to live or rent an apartment. Do you have any ideas about what College Station could do about this? I think we both agree that it's a really good idea to have young families in your city, starting out, that can afford to live there.
Yeah, exactly. I think it, there's so many approaches to it, but I think it's, it's gonna be a bunch of little changes and I think it needs to start with, you know, home prices won't drop immediately, but getting some of those investor buys out to where it sort of exonerates the price is gonna help to level out some of those neighborhoods. Additionally, I, I want to, when I'm, if I'm elected to city council, I want to talk to economic development, excuse me, and just kind of see like, how are we selling the city's businesses that are entry level? That when you start, you're gonna make a salary off the bat. I know the company that I worked, worked for hires high school graduates at a starting salary. And it's more companies like that coming into College Station that gives a little bit more money to the people that are living here. Maybe the people that are graduating from Sall or College Station or even, you know, Brian or Rutter, those people can have jobs immediately. And it's not immediate, it's a sort of a service industry. There's nothing wrong with that, but it's gonna be hard to buy homes here. And I think when you have like sort of a multifaceted approach to it, it's gonna help put those costs down. And it's, you know, it, College Station is expensive to live in, it's a great city to live in and I think you get your bang for your buck. But when you don't have a lot of young families to sort of foster the next generation, that's where it's just gonna start getting interesting. And I, every year, there's thousands of graduates here that I believe would want to stay. We just don't have the businesses yet to offer that to them. And I think that's really the next step. It really is a two-pronged approach. Give businesses so that we can have more housing.
So the first prong, as you were talking about getting the investors out, what are some strategies that you can think of more specifically that maybe have already been done or tried or that you have ideas for in the future? How do you do that?
Sure, so, you know, I, I think that, to clarify, not to get investors out completely. Investing is important. I want a lot of smart economic development. I think it just depends on where we're looking. I, on planning and zoning, I was, I was able to vote in favor of the restricted occupancy ordinance, the RUE, as it was, because I felt like that was a good tool that homeowners in established neighborhoods could use to try to just kind of curtail some of the changes that were happening there. So far, it hasn't been adopted in any of the College Station neighborhoods, but it's there if they need it. And I think that they could use that now, all those properties that were grandfathered in. But it's sort of right now, for better or worse, a paper tiger that might scare off someone in the future. Right, so I think that's a way to start because those neighborhoods also funnel into our schools. And so I think it's important to keep those neighborhoods intact. Whereas I think there's smart development everywhere. I think the midtown area is good, like a good use of land. I know that recently we saw on planning and zoning, there was sort of a, not rundown, but definitely an area that needed to be revitalized. And so one of the things that I've talked about with the people is, we need to revitalize areas, you know, not tear down, rebuild into something that's definitely gonna price out a lot of families. Like revitalize, not a sort of gentrification either, it's revitalization. So that we can keep, you know, certain families that can afford those places there, it can help build the density of the, into the city. And so when you build up on a single piece of land, you can actually get more taxes too from that single place of density. And that helps because homes are great. I would like to own a home one day, but it doesn't bring in as much tax revenue as something that's a little bit more dense. So it's highlighting those areas and knowing where that smart growth should exist and where the infrastructure is to support it. I just don't think in certain neighborhoods that the infrastructure is there to support that.
So I think if I'm reading between the lines, what you're talking about is you're supportive of, of the restricted occupancy overlay in certain areas, but you're supportive of greater density and multifamily in areas, I assume closer to the core, closer to campus, things like that.
Yeah, I definitely feel that way because it's just, what I want to bring to council, and we've kind of talked about, I've talked about to people, is that, you know, I'm, I'm young right now, or, yeah, I'm young right now. And I want a 30-year plan, because I'm still gonna be here in College Station in 30 years. My son will be, you know, in 30 years, my son will be 40, so he hopefully will be living here. I think he likes the city a lot too. And so I want to put these important changes and I want to be part of these important changes now that 30 years, it's like, that was the right decision. It, it's not gonna be an easy decision ever, especially, but I think when you can highlight areas that need revitalization and sometimes that is more density for a changing population, it'll pay off in 30 years.
So let's think about, one outlier to that kind of a plan would be, for example, the South Side neighborhood, which has fought many times over, fought this, this concept, you know, where it's right up next across from campus. Not to put you out on a limb, but do you have any opinions on, on that? Because if you're talking about density in the core and then protecting the more suburban lifestyle on the edges, where does South Side fit into this?
Yeah, I think.
Because it's historic.
Exactly. South Side's one of, exactly. South Side's one of my favorite neighborhoods. I love it. I love the way it looks. And I think that they've done a great job protecting themselves. And I think that I would point to a lot of the other SEC towns, which we compare ourselves to, and they have historic home districts right next to the university. So I think there is an exception to that. And I believe it is that South Side area. I think we should protect that.
We'd like to take a minute to thank the Habitat Restore for furnishing the studio and let you know that everything, and I mean everything, in the video version of this podcast is currently for sale. Except the politicians, of course. If you haven't checked out our Restore, you definitely should. The Habitat for Humanity Restore is the Brazos Valley's premier resale shop where the proceeds of every piece of furniture or decor donated to us go on to help fund building decent, affordable and sustainable homes for families right here in our community. Here you can find everything from the ordinary to the extraordinary to the downright strange. Seriously, we've had a stuffed coyote donated, which sold surprisingly fast. Currently, we have a great collection of home furniture, including a china cabinet and an antique singer brand sewing machine. I might have to buy that one. I'm telling you, before you pay full price for home decor, check out Habitat Restore. I'll put the Restore links in the show notes for you. All right, back to the interview.
If you don't mind, let's change subject to something else that's getting a lot of airtime as we come closer to the election. And that is the charter amendments. So there are a couple of them coming up for a vote. I know that you won't actually have any, because it's going to the people at this point. Were you to be elected in November, the decision to put it to the people has already been made. But we're just curious to hear your thoughts, particularly on one point, which is about the changing the election year from the even to odd. I believe that's what it is, is from, for example, in 2020, there was a vote and instead of 2020, 2024, it's 2021, 2025. And I've heard both sides of the argument, but would like to hear, you know, what were your thoughts? Were you supportive of something like that?
You know, luckily, I get to run it on your election and it'll be over, so I'll tell it then. Because, you know, it's up, it's up for vote and I think that's the right way to do it. I think the citizens should decide that because to me, the two sides are, I understand the more informed voter, I do. I also think that there's not as much engagement as I would like in city politics to begin with. I think it's, it's, it's very wishful thinking to think that you have more engaged and not more, you know, not as, as engaged. I understand that. It's also a little bit more expensive to do, to move the elections and so when we're.
To the odd years.
And so when we're trying to find, you know, money, we don't want to raise taxes on people. We want to try to be as efficient and as, you know, smooth moving government as possible and try not to spend too much money in places that maybe it's unnecessary. I follow, I follow a bit on that side too. I truly see both sides to it. And so that's why it's like, I'm glad that it's coming up for, for a vote. Just let the people decide. Because at this point, I think that's the best way to do it.
Okay, but let the people decide in off-years that has a little less.
That's true. That's true.
Yeah, no, you know, for this podcast and people that, that follow this, we're sponsored by Brian College Station Habitat. And so our focus very much is on particularly low-income families, working families that don't have a lot of time for engagement at the local level and really trying to promote more engagement, more voting, things like that. And so, yeah, we are interested to see how something like this could affect the number of people voting. And just as an anecdote, I went out there today on the internet, part of my job is following local politics, and 30 minutes trying to find the, the actual text of these amendments that were coming up for a vote. Maybe I'm no good at the research, but I had a really hard time finding it. And so I'm imagining a single mom with kids coming home at 6 o'clock and seeing that she's supposed to vote on these things and not even really knowing. So, you know, I agree with you as far as there are both sides to this, but, you know, we, we are very interested in making sure that there isn't anything that is suppressing or causing issues for the votes. We want to see more engagement, not less. I think that you're at the right place.
Yeah, I would, no matter what, I would like to see more engagement. Because I think that there's gonna be 6,000 to 7,000 people to vote in this election and that's it. You know, and that's wild to me. What I like to tell people is, you know, city politics is the one that's gonna matter to you the most a day to day. And so it's, it's interesting how that typically has the least engagement of state, national or city politics. It's city politics no one seems to care about. So more engagement all around, no matter when we're voting.
Agreed. So ultimately, I think what we and the voters, particularly the undecided voters, would like to hear from you is, what are one or a couple of the biggest issues you see coming for College Station as a community? I think that, yeah, I can point out some, but I want to, I want to hear from you because you're the one that's running for office and might get to help decide some of these things.
Right, I think that, well, I think there's, College Station has definitely grown over the last decade, exploded really. And so we've been trying to keep up. But now we have a decade of understanding what explosive growth looks like. So I think we're able to look and say, okay, this is how we can play it out, like I said, for the next 30 years. So the next 10 comprehensive plan, we're just past through P&amp;Z, we gotta look at it. It'll go up to council on October 14th, I believe. That's a good place to start for the, for the rest of the growth, right? It's to see where those areas, where the city staff thinks the growth will be. So that's important that we stick to that, we kind of follow that along. Now, another big issue, you know, is gonna be traffic. Because we're gonna get a lot of people. I don't think College Station is necessarily the most walkable place yet. Bus system is not 100% there. It's, it's wonderful that Brazos Valley Transit exists. Because when I grew up here, it did not really exist in the format that it does now. Where there is like nice, clean buses that look like a bus that'll pick you up. It even comes out to my work all the way out in South College Station. It does, yeah, which is, I actually told them today, I said, hey, if you, if you can't get to work, the bus is coming. You know, and that's an option for someone. And so making that more of a part of it, it's small things. It's like, let's build actual bus stops that encourage people to ride the bus. So that can lead me to traffic some. But also with the comp plan, like I was saying, there, we have a lot in there that this will help with traffic, right? But we talked about planning and zoning and it had been brought up and I totally agree with it. Is there's not necessarily always a great measure to success, which is, in 10 years, how are we gonna know that what we did actually helped at all? And so I think from my perspective in sort of the private sector, I, my job is quite quality control and finding efficiencies and making sure things are working the way they should. And so when you can kind of bring that mindset to it, you're like, okay, what we're proposing is great, but how are we measuring it to the last 10? Like, did we make any significant changes that helped anything at all? So mild tangent, but really going forward, it's just gonna be growth and finding that identity. And like, what does College Station want to be? Are we gonna protect our neighborhoods? And are we gonna help those neighborhood schools and protect those neighborhoods that funnel into it? Or are we just gonna kind of give way to anything, right? And so it's really gonna be just that, and that encompasses a lot. And I think that College Station is an attractive place for anybody and anything because we have a lot of very smart people that work here and very passionate people that live in the city. And so it should not be hard to attract businesses that want to hire graduates. It shouldn't be hard to then get that housing that is desirable, whether or not that's more density because of just changing generations and what's different. You know, I think in the next 10 years, post-urban mall is gonna have to, we're gonna have to take a hard look at that and figure out what we want to do with that. Is it realistic in 2021 or 2031, is a mall realistic? I'm not sure, but have that plan in place that we can roll with it.
Affordable housing.
Affordable, exactly, in the center of the city too. And I love that idea. I do. And, you know, and you can build around that and you can build an equivalent midtown. And I think that's gonna work. And I think that's what will happen because, like I said, it's a generational change. I don't have a problem living in an apartment. And I think that that mindset will change a little bit too. So it's just preparing for those things. It's looking, it's taking that harder look and seeing, you know, it's really the next 30 years.
Well, you mentioned growth is preparing for the more growth, but is there any consideration in the plan you referenced or in your own mind if one day that growth does stop? Because usually you don't hear very many people actually talking about planning for that contingency.
I definitely think so. I think last year showed us what College Station might look like a bit without the idea of students, which if you take that idea as growth, okay, like you could, you see what that looks like. You see a lot of our local restaurants close, a lot of our local businesses. And those are, those are the things I care about. I try to buy local as much as possible. I care about the local people, the local businesses that we have. So I, my ideas of doing the best we can to attract the sort of businesses that are stable in town, I think that'll help for when that grows, you know, I don't think it can go upward forever. So even if it drops off or stabilizes some, I think that having a more diverse, that, excuse me, diverse economy is gonna be really helpful.
There's another council member who recently said, it was more or less that the, the concept of a, I guess, the combined BCS, the idea of a one community is kind of a thing of the past. That's, that's thinking, I, I'm probably not phrasing it exactly correctly, but that seemed to be the concept. And that moving forward, it is College Station. You know, for Brian College Station Habitat for Humanity, just as an example, we have to look at this as a single community. You know, we see a single workforce, a single housing market, all of that. But we've heard a lot of this sentiment of almost politically, this real divergence here between Brian and College Station. Real quickly, what are your views, if any, about going forward, the relations between the sister city to the north and College Station? And where do you go from here?
I think that it's, it's to our detriment to not try to work with Brian. Because I think about it from, one side of it is, I understand the idea of College Station and Brian are two things that exist on their own, because they're two cities that collect their own property taxes. So they do operate on their own. But I look at it, the idea of our fire department and our police department too, where along the city line or whatever, one of them fills in for the other. If, if something happens in College Station and there's a Brian fire department close, they're gonna, the Brian fire department, the Brian EMS is gonna go help. And that's the sort of idea I think we should have. It's like, we're neighbors. And I, I think it'd be ridiculous to not want to work with them, not try to see eye to eye. Because people are gonna come, they're gonna stay in Brian hotels, they're in a number of College Station restaurants and vice versa. I think that the two cities have a lot to offer each other, but I don't know, I don't, I, like, I remember, there was a point in the history of Brian College Station, Brian very much wanted to annex College Station. And so I think, when I think about that, when you ask that question, I'm like, that is long past, obviously. Obviously, I don't think that would ever happen now. But I would like, when I, when I learned about that, when I was in the Citizens Fire Academy, about how Brian and College Station help each other out, I think that's the mindset going forward. It's just like, there's no reason why we can't help one another out when it's needed.
Great, that's good to hear. Well, other than that, is there anything else that you want to tell, tell the voters? And also is there any way that they can get in touch with you if they need to or otherwise reach out? So I'm giving you your final remarks.
Well, I appreciate you hosting me. I think Brazos is a great resource for the two cities. I think that it is probably a vanguard to more things going forward. As these cities grow, what, like 200,000 people almost between the two, if not more, 250,000? Yeah, I mean, the fact that we'll have more podcasts, we'll have more interesting opinions and ways to share them. And I think that really is the future. And so I think to sell myself further, it's just that I've been here my entire life and I intend to stay here my entire life. I'm at a point, not hopefully not the midpoint of my life, but I want to see the next 30 years. And I truly think that it begins now. Like, short-term views, no more. Like, let's, let's plan for the future. Let's see what College Station is gonna be like. Let's see how competitive we're gonna be. And I want to help get us there. So I'm William Wright, you know, I'm running for College Station, place four. You can visit my website at Wright, the number four, wrightforcouncil.org. You can read a little bit more about me. I'd say the last little thing is. Um I'd say the last little thing is I'm just about neighborhoods, supporting our neighborhoods, building our businesses. I, like I mentioned before, I love shopping local. Any chance I can get to shop local, I want to support our local businesses and the and the things that they offer. Um I think that goes a long way towards building a sense of community. And and you know, last year, sorry, this is a little bit more, but last year, we had a, in College Station, they underprotected sales tax, and it actually was way more than I expected. And that was people buying local, and I love that idea. Like, we have to get a sense of community about about us. And I think that helps foster an identity, too, when you're like, oh, this restaurant is a College Station thing, I'm gonna go get them, because I'm a College Station icon, I love it. Um and then about creating our future and just building towards what our future looks like, so.
Well, Mr. Wright, we really appreciate you coming on the Think Brazos podcast, and we hope to be able to do this again soon. Again, William Wright, uh he is running for the College Station City Council, Place Four.
Thank you so much.